Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/49countynewsTV.
This afternoon, it's gonna take us a little while to move through it and we want to get started pretty much on time. So, a few things have come up that's not on your agenda today that we'll hopefully get to. That's just kind of buzzed in on me today and didn't get bad to the agenda, but it's not anything that we can't discuss and wouldn't want to discuss. Our contract with Air Evac has come due in March, I believe.
Yes.
We're trying to get prepared. We've had a few questions that have come up in our discussion. When we would talk about this is to what we get for the contract that we sign each year and pay for. And we just had enough questions that we thought we might should have a presentation. So, first on our agenda today is to hear from our Air Evac. Mr. Jones has come today to kind of explain the position of the air med care and Air Evac flights. And I'd like to let him explain maybe since we've been involved, that some of the changes have happened in his company. How it may or may not have affected our specific contract. What a person who uses the services would expect. Either during using the services and then the consequence of having to use the flight. So for his payment and things like that. So, as much as you can, give us an overview of the company itself and how the billing works and use of the copter and all that stuff. How it fits either locally or abroad, you know, wherever we might use it. So, I'm gonna just turn it over to you, Mr. Jones, and let you talk with us. If you will tell everybody where you fit in the company first and then just start talking about your company.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for allowing me to come up today. I have to say that Hamilton was the very first MSP municipal site plan that was sold in the state of Alabama. And what that meant at the time was that we cover every man, woman, and child in the city limits of Hamilton. And in the event that they had to be flown in the city or in this county, they would not be charged anything for that flight. What we do is if anyone is flown, we will bill their insurance company. And as long as they have a membership under the MSP or if they have an advanced membership, there's no monies out of your pocket whatsoever. We build the insurance company and whatever the insurance company pays us is payment in full. Most of the air flights today can range anywhere from thirty-five to fifty thousand dollars. And that's crazy money, I can tell you, because I see bills every single day. Well, that's not true. Every month, I would say, that come through that I have, you know, people have questions on and we have to answer those. The MSP itself is paid upfront by the city council. That's why we're here today. And it's based on the population in the community. I'm going from recollection, because like I said, you guys have had this now for about five years, almost. Maybe a little plus or minus that. I'm not sure, Mayor, exactly how long. But it was based on the population and back when these MSPs were first done, they were sold about twelve dollars and fifty cents a head. Whereas that that covers, you know, the population in the city limits. To give you an idea of how that has changed since then, today, and if you look at these applications, you'll see that the... These now are eighty-five dollars a household. So, it's it's a big difference in comparison to what the MSP was five years ago plus what it is today. You know, we we positioned this up here for several things, because we were flying an awful lot of folks out of this area up here. And it seemed like to me there was a better mousetrap for the people in the communities. I sold thirty-two cities this MSP program. And what it has done to most of them, I'm not gonna say a hundred percent, because I don't know their revenues or anything like that. But for most of those cities, it has kept a lot more money in the local areas. And you say, well, how is that possible? Well, before the MSPs, every time a person was flown, you know, if they didn't have a membership, they were billed, you know, the amount of the flight. You know, I think when we first started, it was between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars. Well, that money was actually leaving the community, because they had to make some kind of arrangements with Air Evac to pay that bill. And that money was leaving the area going to West Plains, Missouri. So, the city and the county wasn't getting the benefits of the dollars. They were leaving the county. So, myself and several others, we came up with this brilliant idea and, you know, the corporation, they approved it at the time. Of us selling these MSPs and they did it by the population, like I said. So, it was quite a bit less, you know, for the communities. And if we flew someone and they had insurance, we would build the insurance company and it was payment in full. And so, that money was actually staying in the community. They didn't have to make arrangements to, you know, send fifteen or twenty thousand dollars to West Plains, Missouri. So, it has been very beneficial for North Alabama, at least my territory, because I sold the most of these of anybody in the in the company at one time. So, that was the benefits of having the municipal site plans. And out of the thirty-two, we still have thirty-two today in North Alabama. Coleman, the county of Coleman, has the most of them. And then if you'll look out across Northwest Alabama, they're, you know, positioned in all the cities that were in my territory. Since we sold that, and in this little brochure here, I said that the prices have gone to eighty-five dollars. That is to the average person on the street. If I walk up and I say, you know, "Chief, would you like to buy a membership?" And you say, "Well, how much is it?" It's eighty-five dollars. But I have to ask the chief, you know, a personal question. "How old are you? Are you over sixty years old?" If you are, then it drops down to sixty-five dollars. So, they've given a senior discount of about twenty dollars for those that are, you know, over sixty years old. They've also added another program. It's called Fly You Home. And for the average person, just as a standalone product, they don't have to have, you know, the MSP. They don't even have to have a membership. But obviously, it's better if you have the two things. But let's say that, you know, this young man right here wants to buy a Fly You Home. What that does is if he's in Texas, California, somewhere where he is hospitalized, and he wants to fly back to a hospital near his home. Because we all know if you're hospitalized somewhere else, it's gonna tax you financially, you know, to see that person that's in the hospital. So, we came up with a program called Fly You Home, that we will pick you up at that hospital and fly you to the hospital of your choice for a hundred and forty-nine dollars. Most of those type flights, up until the time that we came out with this, started at about ten thousand dollars and went up. How they're doing it, I can't tell you, other than the fact that, you know, they're basing it on volume. And, you know, we're selling an awful lot of these. If you decided, and we're getting away from the MSP, because that's what you guys have. But let's say that there's somebody just on the outside of the city limits here, and they wanted to have a membership and a Fly You Home. We offer that at two-hundred-and-nineteen dollars. Or if you're a senior, a hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the two of them. So, we've tried to do everything humanly possible to make it financially feasible, you know, for every plateau, you know, in a person's age group. Since January one, we do not even sell the MSPs like we sold you guys. We saturated markets and, you know, they slapped our hands and said, "You can't sell anymore." So, basically, you know, what I do as a membership sales manager today, I can only sell one-to-one. I can't even sell any business plans like this anymore. I have to sell, you know, for those who are internet savvy, I have B-to-C. That's all I can sell today is B-to-C, business to customer. And so, business to business, they don't even exist anymore. So, I say this sort of in summing up. It doesn't matter to me personally whether you keep this or forego this, because it's no money out of my pocket or no money in my pocket anyway, either way. But I can say this, you know, truthfully, that if you ever drop this at the price that it was sold, you'll never get it back again. Simply from the standpoint of the culture of the company now. We are the largest ambulatory helicopter service in America. Since the last time I spoke to this organization up here, we have bought AMR ground ambulance, which they're the largest ground ambulance service in America. And we're doing test patterns throughout the United States to whereas we place a helicopter and a ground ambulance at a base. So, you know, like Fayette down here, eventually Fayette will have a helicopter and a ground ambulance, so I'm told. Now, you know, what I'm regurgitating to you guys today is basically what I've been told. So, you know, don't kill the messenger or throw him out, you know, if some of these things do or don't come to pass. But that's pretty much, you know, where we are. They've also, for those that are on the internet a lot, you may see MedMD. We own MedMD on the web now. So, you know, you can do a lot of that type of stuff, you know, on the web. And as time goes on, there are more and more things that they plan to roll out over the next few years. And is there any questions that I can answer direct? Because I, you know, I don't know what kind of questions you guys may have.
Yes, ma'am. I noticed on the paperwork that we got for the renewal, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding it right. Would the citizens of Hamilton still need to be members of Air Evac? And be under our municipal? What if what if we do the municipal and say one of our citizens is not a member of Air Evac?
He's still covered under your MSP.
So, they're covered?
They're covered.
And it would still be billed to their insurance and whatever would apply. They would not be responsible for the difference?
That's right, because the MSP would pick that up.
Okay. I was just making sure that they didn't have to be a member and...
Right.
In the city limits.
But keep this in mind for your citizens, that what Air Evac has done is offered an upgrade to all the MSP people and the citizens within. That for thirty-five dollar upgrades, they can be given a membership nationwide. It will cover them nationwide regardless of where they are. Then, you know, which is no monies in comparison, because they're not even being billed, you know, the eighty-five dollars for the membership. The thirty-five dollar upgrade is on top of what the city is paying, you know, for the MSP. And so, the citizens are actually coming out very, very well, you know, for a thirty-five dollar upgrade.
Because a lot of people have asked that question, you know, to be specific. And, you know, I've told them, well, you need to be a member, because it will cover you anywhere in the state, not just if something happens to you here.
That's right.
And then out of state as well, so.
Well, we would, you know, the company would appreciate everybody being a membership, you know, having memberships. It covers everyone that lives under the roof. They don't have to be married. It can be, you know, husband and wife, or husband and girlfriend, or, you know, children. Or I've got families that have eight and ten people living under one roof and they're covered. What happens is on these applications is the primary is placed up here. And the children or whoever lives under that roof are put down here. In the event there's more people living that there are, you know, lines to cover, put them on a piece of paper and staple it to it and, you know, send it in that way. The only thing that we require is their name and their birth dates. There's nothing more than that to it. We don't ask for social security numbers. We don't ask for... There's no deductibles to this. It's just straightforward. And that's pretty much it. Anybody else? Please.
If if they do not have any insurance, what is the charge?
Then they will be charged the price of the flight.
Even if the city is a member?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Because we have to have someone to bill to get part of the flight back. And it's mandatory through, and this is not me speaking, I think this is through corporate and there's something legally that has to be done, and I don't know what that is. But to forgive the entire debt, and there's got to be an insurance company somewhere that we can build for a portion of what's going on. Because like Blue Cross Blue Shield, that's the biggest, you know, supplier of insurance in Alabama right now. And we're seeing more and more insurance people across the United States turning down flights. You know, and it's putting a big pressure on the company at large. Most of the time, Blue Cross Blue Shield in this area here, on a forty thousand dollar flight, they may pay five to seven thousand dollars for a forty thousand dollar flight. And without a membership, that balance is billed to the individual. Well, under your MSP, that balance won't be billed to the individual. It's covered under the municipal site plan that you guys have got. But we would bill that individual's insurance company for whatever.
For Medicare.
Medicare, right. Now, we can't we can't sell a membership to a Medicaid recipient, because it's already government-paid. So, it would be like double dipping into something. So, whenever we do these MSP logistics on the population of Hamilton, they actually pull out the Medicaid recipient numbers, you know, through the federal government. So, they can pull up any city, any, you know, municipality and tell you how many Medicaid recipients there are in that area. And so, whenever we used to quote these, they would go in there and pull those out and only charge for those people that were... I don't know how to say it, other than just regular everyday citizens that don't have the Medicaid, you know, coverage.
So, would membership be eighty-five dollars per person, or is there like a family coverage?
That's that's a that's family coverage, eighty-five dollars. That's for those that live outside the city limits. Now, if you, and as people come in to the city limits here and move in, like Fayette, they put that in their economic development board, that they have an MSP. And if you're, you know, it's sort of a benefit, if you're living in the city limits, you get covered through, you know, Air Evac's coverage. So, that's something that they use to try to get more people into the city limits. And, you know, it has helped them over the last three years that they've had theirs to actually draw more people inside. And but there again, it has to be somewhere that we can bill somebody for a little bit of it. Because every time that helicopter cranks up, it's about five thousand dollars. And as you well know, Mayor, workman's contractor's liability, you know, all the insurances and everything that go along with business at normal. We have that plus, you know, the liabilities of a helicopter and everything else that goes along with that. So, that's the biggest reason that they have quit doing the MSPs, because it was a animal that took off real big, real, real fast. And a lot of times, there are more flights in a city than there is payment for the aircraft. And so, you know, they found out after about two years that we gotta cut these things out, because, you know, it's just costing more to fly those people that have them. But if you've got it, keep it, simply because that if you ever let it drop, you'll never get it that cheap again. Twelve-fifty in comparison to eighty-five dollars, and I would imagine over the next ten years, there's no telling what it could be. And I'm just trying to be honest with you.
Is there any statistics on how many people flown out of Hamilton since we've signed up?
I'm sure Larry Smith, Dominic Fayette, could give you that. He is a program director. And they have to keep those citizens. I don't know them myself, but I can have Larry give you a call and, you know, go over those with you.
Just some questions in the roundtable discussions of reckon how many people have used it, took advantage of the service we provide. And we didn't have statistics on it. I didn't really know if you would have that with you today or not.
No, sir. They normally don't give that to the sales managers. It's only given to the program directors.
I understand.
And but I'm sure Larry would give that to you.
Okay. I was just inquiring for our good benefit here.
Sir, you had a question a while ago?
Yeah, I was just making sure if you live inside the city limits, and say had an accident outside the city limits. Are you, I guess you're still covered?
As long as they're in this county.
Okay. But if it's in Lamar County?
If it was in Lamar County or somewhere else, they would not be covered. That's the reason we offer that thirty-five dollar upgrade, because we found that, you know, people are so transit today, that it was not fair to say, okay, you gotta have an accident in Hamilton to be covered, or the county, because we know that, you know, people are traveling. And I don't think thirty-five dollars is gonna break anybody for the, in lieu of a forty thousand dollar flight.
We think we got a pretty good deal going here. We just wanted some facts clarifying today, Mr. Jones. If any, any other questions that you have. He's got another appointment back in Trustville tonight. He's gonna have to run pretty quick.
My name and telephone number is at the bottom of these, this application. Here at home, look it over. If you have any questions whatsoever after you've gone through it, please don't hesitate to call me, because I have to tell the story. Back when, a couple of years ago, after I sold Fayette and we sold a lot of the little towns out and about in the communities. Three o'clock in the morning, my phone rings. And this gentleman, he was under the weather. And I could barely understand what he was saying, but he wanted to know if I had one of them there helicopters that he could plant his pine seedlings with. And he had, he said he had figured out a way that, you know, with a downdraft, that he could plant those pine seedlings out of my helicopter. And so, I told him, "No, sir." And if he didn't mind, could he call me back during, you know, daylight hours? Well, it went about a month and he called me again, asked me, "Well..." And this was about the time of the election. He said, "I'm thinking about running for president. Would you, would you vote for me?" And it got to a point that, you know, he was calling me quite regular. And finally, I had to ask him, "Please, lose my telephone number." Because it was always between two and three, four o'clock in the morning, when he was under the weather, that he would start calling. But I had a lady to do the same thing. It was four o'clock in the morning. She called me. And she wanted to talk about becoming a member. And I said, "Ma'am, if you don't mind, call me back in the morning." And she said, "Okay," and she hung up. And I looked at the clock and I think it was just a little after four o'clock. It's six-oh-three. She called me back. And I said, "Okay, I better get up and have a cup of coffee on this one, because this is gonna be a long conversation." But just to say that I don't mind accepting phone calls. If you don't mind, just make it between the daylight hours. And but this this job here is is very rewarding. And it's a blessing to see the multitudes of people that we have an opportunity to, you know, help on the worst day of their life. And thank you for your time. Don't hesitate to call me. And that's all I ask. Mayor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll excuse myself.
We appreciate you coming today. And if any questions come up, thank goodness you've made yourself available for a call.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We'll try to call you through proper hours.
Well, just make sure the sun's up. Nah, I'm good with all of it.
All right, all right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. So good to see you again, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Any other discussions this time on Air Evac? It sounds as though they won't be renewing the city if we cancel our contract. It sounds like we either keep it or we don't have it ever again. They'll still take memberships, but it'll be individualized instead of as a coverage, a broad coverage for our citizens. Any other discussion on that? Rodney, I'm gonna let you talk with us next on the... We had the garbage exemption policy brought here a while back. And he and I have had some discussion today that has opened my eyes somewhat. And I'm gonna let him kind of discuss this. I was about ready to recommend that we maybe revert back to the old system, but maybe Rodney's got something to share with us today that might be enlightening.
Well, I've done some more research on this, on the garbage exemption stuff. And I went this morning to down to the health department to talk to Mr. Thad. And he was gone today, so I couldn't speak with him today. But I do wanna talk to him and get recommendations from him. Because I really haven't discussed it with him about it, because I did with Sam LaMaestro when he was there, but Sam's retired now, gone. And I hadn't been able to speak with Mr. Thad. But the Alabama Health, Public Health, has revised their application form for garbage exemption. It still has the same state law on it, but it actually puts it on this affidavit. And we actually gave Mr. Thad a copy of this of this affidavits. And this is, he says this is what he's gonna use this year for garbage exemption, coming up in October when we start it. But it, like I said, it actually tells what the law is on the state law on the affidavit. It's a more official affidavit than what we've used in the past, what they've used in the past. But and we have, we have done a, I say, a better job this year of going by the affidavit or going by the rules with the with the customers. And it's like, like I told the girls, I told the mayor, you know, if if somebody gets denied benefit or denied garbage exemption, and they walk in and all you tell them is, "You got denied," they're gonna get evil and they're gonna raise game. And they're, they're gonna raise cane. But if you explain why they didn't qualify, they understand. And I've sat down with several people this year and explained to them why they didn't qualify. Either their spouse had a job and had other income coming into the house, you know. And it, and it plainly states on there that the, the only source of income for the whole house can only be social security. And of course, we have people that try to get around that. But this, it's, it's pretty much a black and white law. And I mean, the thing is, we, we have to go by it.
When Rodney and I looked over his book, uh, group that he brought me the other day just to show me what they were up against, uh, my idea was to rescue our clerks that face them when they come in. They don't come in asking very nicely a lot of times. And I didn't want them to have to face a fuss with the people who want exemption, who've been denied. And Rodney has agreed to individually take his time and meet one-on-one with these people today. And I talked about it, to avoid that fuss at the window.
Yes.
Where we collect our water bills. And with that said, I, I, I'm not quite as worried as I was about the fusses being heard in our lobby with other people standing around to... Because they're on the outside of that, uh, glass talking into our people. They're upset. Uh, some of them, uh, just didn't get their notices in on time. Some of them don't really qualify. So there's legitimate cases where they didn't bring proper proof to get exemption. And then there's those who still want to be exempt even though they're making other incomes in their household other than social security. And, uh, to have that argument there at our windows is, it's not a pretty scene. And others stand around and hear that. And they said, all they wanna do down there is have a fuss, uh, at the water department. And we don't want that report going on the street. That's not what we're about. We want to give service and, and at a reasonable price. And, but we have to charge for those who don't exempt or prove that they are exempt. And that's where Rodney's agreed to come in and try to salvage this operation and keep it here.
And that, that was the main objective on my part, was to get it away from those girls. I mean, I don't feel like they should be the ones, and they shouldn't be the ones to have to say you exempt or you don't exempt. And they shouldn't be the ones to have to take the gist from it.
But Rodney pointed out where the law is cited on that affidavit. And it's very clear that, that one income is all you can have. And it, it is a law. We could be audited under this and, and found, uh, out of sorts. And we don't wanna be out of sorts on any audit. So we're gonna try to go with the book. But you guys may get some calls. You're a part of the service here in this organization. And people don't mind reaching out to you for help. So please refer everything back to Rodney because he's gonna meet with these people. And, and let's, I'm trying, I had a lady today pin me down for help. I felt for her, but I brought Rodney in. I said, no, I, I promise not to intervene in this. So, uh, I, I, it's in Rodney's hands. He'll do whatever's right. And, uh, I'm real proud that he stepped up today because I was ready to try to get this qualification out here and set somewhere else for the, for the decision. But with today's developments, I'm feeling better about it.
I believe one reason the health department, they, they get so many in. They get it for the county, they get it for the cities, they get it for the others. Pretty much everybody in the county that participates in this garbage exemption stuff, they get the, they have to hand out the applications for it or the affidavits for it. And it, I think it, it got to the point where they would just sort them out there and just bring the stacks to whoever and say, here they are, you know. And I, I, I've thought about this, I talked to the girls about this today also. This year, like, come October, we are gonna re- clarify on the garbage bill or on the water bill. Uh, I, I think that could be misleading also to people because I was putting on there to qualify for garbage exemption, you had, you had to go to the health department and get the application. But I think some people assumed that as long as they went to the health department and got the application.
Automatic.
They were, they were exempt and turned it in on time, they were exempt.
Yep.
But that's not the case always.
Certification.
I'm gonna re- rethink how we post that on the bills come October to get them to qualify.
Good point, good point. And that could be misleading.
Yeah.
As folks would say, well, I did what you told me to do, now it quays my garbage. But we're providing that service. My ex-guys leave at six-thirty every morning to go pick that garbage up. And some people are asking us to do a lot of favors. Back down my drive, that you gotta reverse the truck and, uh, and look through your mirrors and make sure you don't run over the bicycle and whatever's down that drive to get that garbage. We do a lot of stuff just to give service and seventeen dollars a month, you get your garbage picked up four times. Some of them have three cans out there that have to be emptied. And, and they're not always, uh, light. We had one customer this week say garbage truck left, my can's got a rip in it. Uh, pretty much saying that we damaged a fairly new can, a flipped can. So Mike went out to see about that. And where it fall, you know, we're gonna do right by them. And that, it's just a lot to this. And so we wanna, we only want to exempt the folks that really are exempt. And I think we did enough research to see that we have to participate in this exemption program. So it's a mandatory thing. So that's why the, we're having discussion on how we qualify them and the fact that we do qualify them. And otherwise we wouldn't be bringing it to this table. If y'all got any comments or thoughts on this, as how we might do it differently or better?
Hey, I, I was out there one, oh, yesterday or day before when it was raining and cold. And I saw those boys' trucks over there picking up that. And I thought about what you're talking about. They don't realize them garbage people go out there and they got a tough job. It's rain, snow, sleet, mud, doesn't matter what. They're out there and they're out there about six-thirty, aren't they? It was early and it was raining, it was cold, and they were on the back of that, picking up that garbage. These people don't really, none of us don't get to think about it. My daddy worked out there in that truck for about twenty-five years on the back of that truck. It's a little rougher then than it is now. But I, I think about them, I really do, out there.
We're talking about people getting free garbage pickup. And if they qualify, obviously they're gonna get it. But that's not a big moneymaker for us, but it's a big service. You try not picking up the garbage on Monday when it's due. You think the phone won't ring off the wall? I'm telling you, it, it rings a lot. And that's a service that people expect. And some folks get that same service without paying because they're exempt. That's why we're putting emphasis on the exemption part of the program. We'll do the best we can with it. And if we see more problems, y'all are gonna hear from us again, aren't you Rodney?
That seems, that seems like a, really awful good way to handle it. I mean, you know.
And just go on by the book and sit in the lobby.
You can get them up there in your little cooking hole and explain it in that not, you know, we're not... And we, we've been surprised this year. We had, we had several people that actually got denied. But, you know, they had other income coming in or, or, you know. And I would, I took several of them and, and sit down with them and explained why they were denied. And they understood. I had one guy that had been getting, uh, been getting exempted every year for the last several years. And I come to find out, he had a other income on his documents that, that we looked at. And I said, well, what's this other income? He said, oh, my wife got a job. And I said, you don't qualify. The only source of income for the whole household has gotta be social security. And he understood it and he was fine with it.
Well, yeah, appreciate you Rodney, you with it and won't those arguments happening at the window that the ladies try to collect our bills. Thank you for stepping up. Uh, on the third item, uh, this came up at the, while we were passing our minutes the other night. Tammy pointed out that one phase of, of the preparation that she did for us to pattern our water department merit matters was a, a small raise that was written in there. I took that out purposely because we've covered raises earlier when we were talking about merit raises. But mullet Tammy explained her position on that and...
Well, it's really, I mean, it's not my position, it's what was passed. And once the minutes are passed and you voted unanimously, unanimously, it was unanimous vote for the whole council. And, uh, the wording went through, um, everybody here voted yes on it. And then you took it away and...
I read and read and read. I knew we were talking about merit raises, trying to figure out, uh, if there was actually a raise, if someone had not achieved their, uh, goal and, and getting their, uh, certification. I said, we weren't talking about raises, so it can't mean a raise.
Well, this is what everybody voted on. And I mean, it was a unanimous vote. And then not everyone got the raise. And even though this isn't, oh, this doesn't belong with these minutes, some people didn't even get this raise right here that's even documented in this, in these minutes. So it's just, uh, I mean, it's not, it's not right. It was a unanimous vote and it hasn't been followed through with for everybody. And, um, I talked to Scott about it and I asked him, you know, I thought at first you mightn't have veto authority, but you don't. So that's why I waited till the meeting to see if you had gone through the procedures and you did have the veto authority, but you don't. And you did vote with the council and it was unanimous. And I don't understand what had happened. So...
The only reason that I took it out is because we weren't talking about across the board raises and merit raises. None of the board understood it was across, that it was a cross-the-board raise. And I, when I read it and reread it, even though I was, uh, doing it on the motion, I said, this has got to be for people who have achieved that, uh, grade level. And I, and it was a misunderstanding on my part because I didn't think we were talking about raises for people in, in any department.
If, if it was...
Except merit raises.
If it was a misunderstanding, it was a misunderstanding. And the only way to rehandle it or the only way to handle it, I think, is wanting to be to go back and have another vote.
I saw that.
Oh, but, I mean, they've already been, they're behind three weeks on the raise that they got. So it'll be taking it away. And this right here, even though it says it, at least two men didn't even get that. So I don't, I don't understand. But, uh, I mean, it, I didn't come up with this wording, so it's not my deal. I didn't word this. It, it's just what was on the agenda. I didn't, you know, I didn't word this, I didn't come up with this wording. But we all voted on it and it was a unanimous vote.
Well, if we had been sitting at this table in our discussion of losing employees because being under the current, uh, uh, level of pay for those people who have achieved their certifications, if we'd been talking about, around this table about raises, the raises would've been included. But just to write a department a raise when we're not talking about the city's employees as a whole, I mean, I didn't know I was gonna be voting for that.
Well, I didn't write the agenda, so I don't know. I mean, I don't, I don't word anything, I didn't, I don't know. But we all voted on it. And the agenda, I mean, the minutes were correct when we voted to pass the, or to adopt the minutes. The minutes are correct, it's just the pay scale's not correct. So I don't, you know...
Who prepared the pay scale?
Sir?
Who prepared the pay scale?
Well, we, we, uh, we allowed, uh, after we talked about it, we allowed Tammy to work on it. Uh, and, and kinda get it up to standards based on Rodney's findings. And I pretty much agreed with the, the overall standings, but I just didn't write in the raise for any, any department because we did raises earlier in the year or last year. And, uh...
Did we pay some of them and some of them not get paid?
Yes.
How many of them didn't get paid? Or we're talking about just the water department?
We gave, we gave the certified boys their, uh, merit raises. But, uh, the, all the water department boys would've got a raise based on...
These men didn't get their raise.
You hired?
Yeah, they did not get their raise.
Why were they getting a raise?
It's on this pay scale.
That's a good question. Why are they getting a raise and everybody, everybody else in the, in the cities not getting a raise?
Well, I mean, this, I, this isn't even the pay scale.
I can understand the merit of people that get their certifications.
But I mean, I didn't...
But why, why are you giving the water department a raise? They're regular employees and not giving one across the board?
I got the agenda and this is what came out. And with the numbers that were given, I tried to figure out a pay scale.
But did you figure one for every department or just one for the water department?
I just figured one for the water department because they were the only thing on the agenda. And not all men, I don't think, will take the test to be grade one. So there was gonna have to be separate scales. So, but this isn't, I, I came up with four, four different pay scales to cover everything, I thought. And this is just two pay scales. And, I mean, it didn't, it hadn't even been followed. So I don't, I mean, I don't, I just know we passed something and it didn't happen. It's one of all the boys now too. And I didn't pass it along, I'm just one vote. It was a unanimous vote that night.
I was there.
So, so, I mean, it was unanimous. And, uh...
The only thing that brought my, brought, was brought to my attention is that no numbers were ever mentioned at the council meeting. And I'm not picking on anybody by no means. But under normal cir- circumstances, Tammy, you would've raised cane if I'd have went to the board and I didn't have any numbers out there and the, and the ca- and voted on it. You'd have voted no in this, but in this circumstance, you were the first one to raise your hand up and no numbers had ever been mentioned.
I need the numbers.
Did everybody else?
I don't know, I'm not responsible for everybody else.
I know, but...
I vote my vote.
I know, but no numbers were mentioned in any other circumstances. You'd have raised cane about it because it wasn't following the pro- proper procedure. Yep, right? Am I right in saying that?
I vote my vote. And I need the numbers.
Let, let me say something. How, how do we straighten it out? We just, we just need to get it, stop it and get it straightened out with everybody so everybody will be happy then, move it forward.
Well...
We can't do anything else.
No.
It, it's happened.
When the seat was seen, the perception was that all water department employees got a raise. Nobody else in the city was considered. That's why the raise didn't happen, except for merit raises for the three and four operators and the, the ones. Uh, and I think the best thing to do is bring it back, disclose the numbers and revote it. I, I really think it needs to be done. I think we've got a misunderstanding on the table. Uh, I think we're gonna have every department, uh, upset with the city and us as a council for doing it this way. And I'll take some of the blame if any of you don't wanna take the blame. And I'll take some of the blame, if any of you don't wanna take the blame, that's fine, I'll take all the blame. But I'd like to have it revoked it. With it all laid on the table, I'm not ready to consider any more raises myself. We did nice raises for everybody. We were trying to save employees is what I thought we were doing. And we were trying to make sure that our employees, uh, feel rewarded for their achievements. Merit raises is all that I was trying to do. And I want to bring it back to the meeting and revote it.
So what are you gonna do about these men that are obviously what you agreed on that haven't gotten their raise? If it was your decision to go through with this part of the pay scale, but yet not everybody covered in this pay scale got their raise, what are you gonna do with those men?
The only ones that didn't get it was only twenty-five cents.
How many of them?
If I give these men twenty-five cents, I wanna give all of our workers twenty-five cents.
But you're saying right here, you're giving it to them, but yet they haven't gotten it.
Okay. As I say, maybe it's a misunderstanding as to, I didn't realize that someone who was to get a raise didn't get a raise. I thought we had worked a twenty-five cent an hour raise across the boards and, and for the guys that I wasn't expecting. Cause we'd only talked about merit raises at this table. I didn't see that across the board raise coming. And I still didn't, until right now, understand that somebody that was to get a raise didn't get a raise.
Well, how you wanna, how you wanna straighten that? We just, we got the, you wanna work that point down?
Get it straightened out right now.
That's what I'm, that's what I fixed to say, you wanna get it straightened out for the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't want, I don't want to muddy the water. We kinda, we kinda got things running, uh, fairly decent. I don't, I didn't want any more of our operators to walk away. I knew they were looking at other jobs and, and possibilities of leaving us. My goal in this was to bring this to the table, save these people from eroding and walking away from us. Uh, my goal was not to have everybody's department get another raise, but if I give these men their across the board raise, I've got, I've got to listen to these other department heads. Tim's not here today, but he's done talked to me. Tim Kerr, he feels the same way that these men feel. They're gonna be drumming for their people, uh, the same thing we're giving the water boys.
Well, I don't blame them, they work just as hard as they do.
Do I understand you guys correctly?
That's, that's why I'm here.
That's why I'm here and all of my officers are certified and have to keep that certification up annually. If they lose it, they have, they lose their job.
That, that, personally, I, I'm not against and I'm for people with a grade one, grade three, grade four, whatever certification they've got to have. They deserve to make more money and I'm honest about that.
And I don't have an opposition to the, the three and four grade levels, I understand that.
There's other, there's other things other than water certification that people have to have. And, and, you know, I have to have CDL drivers, you know? Should they make more than someone that doesn't? Sure they should, but they don't. And, you know, so. But, but the single one department out, in my opinion, is not. You know, we've got a group of people now that I think all departments work well together. Their best, try their best too, I think. Uh, and when you pay raise one department and not someone else, that's what causes division in these departments. Jealousy from department to department. It's what it is. And it, and it, and it, your morale goes down for your employees, it's, you know, we just. You know, I just don't want our departments to be divided.
You can't blame them. And see, we. I mean, you know, you gotta do everybody the same, I, I don't, I don't understand the thing.
Public safety divisions, as far as fire and police department, you know, we understood the parity raises that y'all were trying to do with the city and the street and the recs and everything a while back. So we weren't ever even involved in that one, so all of that side of the city got a pay raise. We stood by it because we understood that.
Well, you know, it's not normal that we give a three or four dollar an hour raise to anyone. That's why you don't go public, you've got public opinion. We're gonna finally hear it public today because we're broadcasting right now. But we gave some pretty nice raises to these guys, merit raises that we hadn't done in a long time. But that's why there wasn't a lot of talk on the camera or in the paper about how much we were doing, but let's just put it out here today. Those were nice raises.
And those weren't the ones that we're talking about.
No. I'm, I'm talking about, that's why there wasn't a lot said on the camera about rates. We said as little as we had to say to get the job done. Now there's a misunderstanding over what apparently was supposed to be done. It's, 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 it's layered.
We all just need to sit down, the heads of whatever you're talking about and just get it straightened out. I mean, we're not gonna get it straightened out sitting here right now, we need to get them to discuss it, bring it back to the council.
I understood when they gave the raises, it was a dollar an hour across the board. Everybody working for the city got a dollar raise. Was this not what we voted on?
It was.
We origed along last year.
Last year.
Last year.
Yeah.
That's what I felt about.
Yeah.
I think some of the misunderstanding was at the work session before that January twenty-second meeting, when this happened. You know, we talked about just the wastewater and the water treatment plant. Because you were losing people or going to increase in their pay. So when we got ready for the agenda, I think you and I got together and that's, that's how the wording came up for what was voted on.
I mentioned too in our work session about the people getting grade ones.
Yes, whatever the certification was, cause I, I asked you, I said, how do I need to word this because?
I never, I never mentioned the cross the board raise for the whole water department, never.
But that's how the wording came to be.
That's how it came out to be.
And that's what was voted on and I think the pay scale that Tammy had come up with for that original, what was voted on. And then it was changed after, you know, it, you realized that it was gonna be pretty much for everybody in the water department. And that's when we changed it to the one that's actually in that minute book. That's why the, the wording is correct, but the pay scale is not that goes with that. So I think to fix it, we're gonna have to put that back on the agenda for Monday. Uh, we definitely need to get with Scott and pinpoint, uh, we can't change what we've already done, I don't think. We can't take anything away from anybody, but, um, we need to put it in black and white. It needs to be there, the, the figures and everybody vote, yes, no, however, so that those minutes match exactly what we put in that book.
In other words, leave it the way it is and start over.
Well, I mean, we can't change what we've already paid, but.
I think that's right, yeah.
If there's issues with who is not or should or whatever, as far as the water department is concerned with what we've already done here, um, I think the only way to fix it, if this is not matching the pay scale in that book, and it doesn't, because there's been another one. You know, what I had was not right, what I put in those minutes. You know, that just all needs to be, okay, here it is, this is the one that we're going by. And this is who's gonna get it or whatever, and then that needs to be voted on to fix it from this point forward. You know, one way or the, the other.
Oh, yeah, that's the one way.
And that's, that's just to fix, that's just to fix this.
Y'all sit down and get it straightened out and bring it back to us.
I mean, we just need to make the, the pay scale match whatever we've got in the minutes. Because that's not right. I mean, that's the only way I know to fix it. I mean, we definitely need to ask Scott, of course, uh, how to word it, how, how do we need to go about that to, to put it on the agenda? To fix it or to, to clarify it, I won't say fix it necessarily, but to, to clarify it.
Well, uh, obviously, I don't know how to unfix it. Tammy's point is we didn't follow, uh, the procedure. Uh, I don't know how to fix it.
We can fix it if you decide on, um, if, if you were looking at it where it wasn't an across the board, you know, it's gonna be this for, for these people and, and not these people necessarily. Uh, whatever pay scale you go with, that needs to be presented, you know, and it'll have to be voted on to change it.
Pretty much, pretty much at this point, what I've heard from all department heads is I'm gonna stand up for my employees.
Sure.
If, if the water guys get a raise, I'm gonna expect my guys to get an equal raise. Or a merit raise or this or that. So I don't know what we're facing, uh, if we give the raise to the water guys. Uh, we're facing whatever these guys bring to the table. And, uh, you know, I, there's some uncertainty here at this point. And, uh, we probably rushed into this a little bit trying to save our employees. We might should've, uh, worked a little harder at it and been more diligent. When I saw what I perceived to be an across the board raise, I said, that's not what the council was expecting. We did our raises for this administration some time ago. We're doing merit raises only. And I think these guys were allowed to, our privileges to the sheet, read it as those and across the board raise and, and then this is what we're kinda faced with. So, we'll try to get to Scott Hunt and we may have to call you guys back to fix this. Uh, if we put something on the agenda, I think y'all need to know what's on the agenda, that it'll be spelled out in good language. Uh, everything, there won't be any non-disclosures of how much the raises are, who gets the raises, how much they are. It'll all be laid on the table for every department head to see, for every council person to understand. And we'll be following the direction of our attorney.
Sounds good, man.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll try to get that square and, uh, go forward. The Bill Jones place has been offered to the city, uh, directly across from the, uh, water tower on two seventy-eighth highway. Uh, there's twenty-eight acres and a brick house, an older brick house. I don't know the price. Uh, I had a call from, uh, one of the Jones family. Said this is gonna start going to the market, we'd rather give the city first chances at the property if you're interested. And I'd like y'all to be considering that as to whether or not you might be interested.
What do we need, what do we need?
I don't know where it is.
It's right past though. Have a register over there.
East side.
East side register.
Just five east side. Just before you.
Oh, it's where that sign, I mean, is it since commercial or residential? Because I didn't wonder, okay, okay.
That's before you got.
Is it on the main road?
Yeah.
Starts the twenty-eighth, yeah. What would we need with it?
Well, they just, the family was just racist enough to offer it to us.
We appreciate that, yeah.
And if we don't need it, we don't need it, but they wanted us to have the first chance.
Well, that's nice of them.
So if, if y'all think about it and, and think we do need it, well, then let me know and we'll try to get a price. Uh, there's another piece of property that has, has come into sight and it's close to our industrial park, uh, down, uh, by I twenty-two. It actually, part of it bounds.
That's the industrial park.
Okay.
And that's the road.
Okay. Yeah, we've got some property, twenty-five acres that goes to the Buddy Hatcha River and follows the river as one of the, uh, Tammy's got a showing of it here. Uh, this is the city park right here. This is our, our park that we have, the industrial park. This is just across the road from that park and it's got a shed and maybe a well.
There's a pond down there, I, I read in the description.
Okay. But it's owned by Bart Walker, it's come up for sale, but it's real close, it's even on the industrial road. Uh, so it's, it's close to, uh, it's close to our property down there, uh.
Is it on the interstate or anything?
No, it's, it's on the.
The industrial park.
This is industrial park?
This is.
Oh, that, this is.
It's across the road from it. And then it goes down to the banks of the Buddy Hatcha River. It's kinda on the, uh, Ford and Bridge Loop, I guess.
You go past the church and it's on the opposite side of the church.
If you go on that road that goes by McCollum and Bridge Church, be on the right and going down the river.
Rupture McCollum property.
They didn't give a price on it?
It's rocky, urban property.
Well, we don't know, the tax, the tax prowl's a hundred and eleven thousand dollars on it.
If you turn it.
There's a forty-eight thousand dollar building that's shown on this description. I think that's Lee Gann's old house.
There's a road that turns around there.
Huge road.
Huge road.
Herman Gann.
I think, I think, I think it may be, uh, formerly some of the, the Gann property.
But it does join our property, across the road from the property.
It's right, yeah.
But it's not on the, is, is it come out to the interstate or not?
It's a lot.
Is it on the river?
On the back part of it.
On the river.
Yeah.
That would go on toward the river.
Then in it toward Bon Hughes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fits in that framework. So that's come up, we just wanna make sure the city don't pass up something we need here. Tammy had let me know about it yesterday, I said, well, I'm interested in talking about it, cause, you know, it's close to our park.
Yeah, I started saying that'd be more interest than that other there, since it's across from that park. Twenty-eight acres or twenty, whatever it is would be about right, so pretty small industry or whatever, certain thing else to do.
It would group, it would group industry, uh, somewhat, uh, if we start to grow in that way, it might be an interesting piece of property to develop. I wish the, uh, assessments didn't have that much in it for buildings, I'd rather just purchase land, but it has a pretty good assessment in it. Don't, do we know what Bart's asking for the property, Tammy?
I'm gonna use an over-rap better.
Yeah, okay. Um, I just, uh, she sent it over to me and I just printed it down to, anybody wants to look at the, it's twenty-five acres according to the taxes on the property's four hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Goes down to the river.
It joins the Buddy Hatcha River, it's a pretty good little.
That river doesn't get up down there either, does it?
Well.
It does.
Hang out one time.
I think it's out.
I don't believe it's in flood plain. There might be a small portion of it that is, but I don't think very much of it is affected by flood plain. Uh, Buddy Butt has contacted me, uh, this week, let's be thinking on these. Buddy Butt has contacted me, uh, this week, let's be thinking on these properties. Uh, he said, the law office at eight eighteen, uh, Military Street South will be changing ownership. The agreement with the current occupants is that, is to have all their furniture files et cetera out by March one, two thousand nineteen. Is the city interested in displaying any of the subject memorabilia? And that's some things that were, uh, on the desk, and maybe a desk of, uh, Mr. Butt's. And also, they're wanting to, uh, have the old law office moved off of that piece of property and relocated, and he asked if we'd be interested in the old Butt Law Office to foot back for this building here.
Where is that?
They know what wouldn't build it.
It's a small shotgun-looking law office sits right behind the big office. And what they're asking for is whether or not we would consent to displace the memorabilia in the front part of the, kinda like a museum thing in our front of the, uh, where we don't use as offices and trying to maintain this historic. Or if we would possibly let them put the law office on this property. I want y'all to think on that. I haven't, I haven't replied to Buddy on any of this stuff.
So, will all of these things still be owned by him, or, or will it be owned by the city? Who will be in charge of it?
Uh.
I mean, will it be like their law office sitting on city property that we have no say-so over in their memorabilia down there, or are they wanting to donate it to the city?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. You need to ask whether they're gonna donate it to the city or not, and be city property and not theirs anymore.
Okay.
I think it'd be nice to, if you do that, you know, I'd hate to have to take care of their property. But that little building and all that stuff, if they would donate it to the city, put the city on it, I think it'd be nice to do it.
Okay, this is another email earlier that I got. As discussed with you Friday, May the fourth, two thousand eighteen, my sons and I are interested in possibly having some of my father's memorabilia displayed in the new city hall located in the home of Ernest Baxter Butt and Minnie Watt Pierce Butt. Should this be allowed by the city of Hamilton? I can meet with representatives of the city to select the memorabilia for display. I will also be happy to meet with the city council to discuss this. So, this is some ongoing correspondence. I printed two or three, uh, messages I've had, had from him, and, uh, he had talked Andrea Harbison at one time concerning this request about the memorabilia. Now, I only found out about the building relocation in this message that I got February the twelfth. That was Tuesday. I got this message from Buddy, and he was telling me then about the, the building selling. It's a, it's been sold, I understand, uh, and the new owners probably are gonna be CIS Financial. That'll be our new neighbors down here. It'll be their corporate headquarters.
It's awful small for them.
They'll be moving their workers. They'll have their corporates.
Oh, okay.
I'm glad they said it.
Yeah, I wondered about it, you know?
Yeah.
Wonder who'd buy it.
They've been working on this deal quite some time, but I, this is, it's being finalized now. And we'll need to find out, I think, about how we, how we would fit into the-
Buddy just needs to come down and talk to us, yeah, in council.
Yeah, I think he does. He, he would have, I think he'd have enough authority to make everything he says stick.
He would.
Okay. I think all of y'all got a showing of your, uh, uh, cost of the van to the city. With the add-ons, the base price is fifty-four three sixty-three, and the ladies brought the information on the options that were added on, twenty-one hundred sixty-one dollars, for total cost of fifty-six thousand five twenty-four. But twenty percent of that figure is eleven thousand three oh five, and we were expecting to put about twelve thousand in the, uh, new bus, but it'll be a little bit less than that, so, that would go about that.
That's unusual.
Actually, it came up with these numbers on the evidence.
Have you heard anything on our bridge, over there?
The bridge is, uh, finished, uh, they're finished with paving, and then we've gotta have our bridge inspector inspect it before the state allows opening it. And it's a nice bridge, uh, I went over to it the other day and looked at it. You can tell it's a wider bridge. It's not one of the very wide ones. It's a twenty-four foot. We were hoping for twenty-eight, so they wouldn't let us, let us have twenty-eight feet. That was that narrow little corridor that, uh, fits with it. So, we've got a twenty-four foot bridge, and it's very nice, but almost ready to open.
It looks like it's ready.
Yeah, they, they've got the paving, pavement done. I, I think they've still gotta go back and work the shoulders, put some crushing run or whatever they put on the side of the shoulders there, and it should be ready for inspection, I believe.
I talked to Bill about it recently, and he gave me the-
Green matter.
All I had to get the inspector ready.
Have we got any figures on what that's costing us?
Yeah, she's got hundreds.
Not right here, but I can get a-
Yeah, she's got a-
You not got a guess?
No.
You have a guess?
I remember the figure, but I mean, I don't-
Yeah, but it won't be that figure. I think it's gonna be a lot more than the first one we got.
We, uh, we put our money up front, and we're getting reimbursements. She's having to do some paying, but we're getting reimbursements. A million dollars was granted us, uh, I think the visit was a million one thirty-four.
I have so many projects bouncing around in my head right now. I'd have to actually go pull the folder, which I can do.
No, no, I, I don't, but I, I know that we're spending a lot of money, and it kinda worries me that what we've got coming forward now.
We haven't gone over on that one.
No, but not, yeah, but what I'm saying, we got a lot more, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Seeing down the road, and we don't have that much money. What we've had since we've been in here is money to pay upfront for it.
We were, we, we already paid a hu- hundred percent of the money that they assessed us, be- before they'd start the project. We had to send our money in upfront.
Yeah, I know, I know, I, I, I know, but I'm worried about this other stuff we've got coming out.
Oh, yeah.
We've got a lot of it that's out in front of us, that we're gonna have to, and I'm hoping we get our taxes, our tax money coming in, payments, you know? I just think we, we're gonna have to be careful on what we're, what we're spending into the hundred thousand dollars and so on and so forth, because it seems that we've had a lot of that since we've been in here.
Well, we have. We, we've paid lots.
I mean, we, we needed, I mean, we need to, don't get me wrong, but still, I, I, I think we need to watch down the road, because now, if we get this, have to spend this money down here on this Fulton Bridge Road, see, we're talking about a lot of money to widen that road. Even if we get a grant, which we got turned down, didn't we, on the thirty-five?
I believe so.
Even if we got the money on it, we're still gonna have, we'd still have to put up, what, twenty percent or whatever?
Just depends on-
It'd still be a lot of money, and that we're gonna have to do if they start that, we're gonna have to build that road. We're gonna have to pay for roads up to their place. We just got a lot of things that we gotta do.
That Ragsdale Housing Authority project could be starting to flow on. That CDBG for water sewer.
Another expense?
Yes.
Yes. And I, I just remember we had a, we've been getting along fine, but there's a lot of stuff down the road. We're gonna have to be careful.
I mean, we get money, and then the housing authority will pay. They're paying more of the percentage than the city will be. So, I mean, it's, it's good for what we're getting, for what we're having to pay, but it is an expense.
I need to meet with Herbert and Wade for a minute in my office, and I need Jean and Tammy to wait, and I need to meet with y'all in it, so this, this is not gonna be a meeting. This is something that y'all got to hear that I can't talk about yet.
How about the rent on TV cable?
I'm gonna pay.
You'll be nice to that, okay.
Um.
I'll meet with you in here alone.
I'm outta here.